...of the Expo Center to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance this morning.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the September 21st, 2017 meeting of the Shawnee County Board of Commissioners. My name is Bob Archer. I currently serve as Chair of the Commission and represent District Three alongside Commissioner Shelley Buehler, a woman of distinction, who represents District One, and Commissioner Kevin Cook, who represents District Two. Good morning.
Good morning.
Welcome, everyone. First item of business, please.
First item is Item Three, Consent Agenda.
There are, I did want to make a note, in Item One, in the contract from the Sheriff's Office, it says effective to September 30th, 2018, and it's actually 2017. I wanted to make sure.
I was mistaken. It's the spending from the 2017 budget.
Okay.
Oh, sorry.
All right, all right. So, strike that. It is funding from the 2017 budget is the correction. Thank you, Jane.
I'll move approval of the consent agenda with that correction.
Okay.
Second.
Motion made to approve by Commissioner Buehler and seconded by Commissioner Cook. All in favor say aye. Opposed, no motion carries. Three to zero. Thank you, Jane. Next item, please.
Item Four, New Business. A County Clerk, Number One, consider all voucher payments.
Commissioners, this morning we have vouchers a total of $472,232.25. The highlights out of the voucher report are withholdings of $80,215.72, court expenditures of $95,621.87, holding accounts for the state of Kansas, motor vehicle related, $98,589.42. Those are really the three highlights. The rest of the expenditures are rather smaller in nature and would take quite a bit of time to go through, listing them all out. But I would, do not have any questions or move for their approval.
Second.
Motion made to approve the voucher report by Commissioner Cook, seconded by Commissioner Buehler. All in favor say aye. Opposed, no motion carries. Three to zero. Next item, please.
Item A two, Consider Correction Orders. I'll move approval.
Second.
Motion made to approve the correction orders by Commissioner Buehler, seconded by Commissioner Cook. All in favor say aye. Opposed, no motion carries. Three to zero. Next item, please.
Item B, Parks and Recreation, Number One, Consider Authorization and Execution of Contract C-310-2017 with Gardner Roofing Inc. for the replacement of roofs on the Lingo Livery and Blacksmith Shop buildings at Old Prairie Town at a cost of $16,720 with funding from the Parks and Recreation Building Maintenance Fund.
Good morning, Commissioners. John Knight, Parks and Recreation. I have John Bell, who is the Director of Old Prairie Town here as well today to answer any questions. If you recall, about a week ago, I had a nice little, oh, I don't know if it was nice or not, had a presentation on the individual management plans for our different parks. But this fits into our longer range plan because when I submitted our 2018 budget, I submitted to you that a five-year plan, and these roofs were on that five-year plan to be done in 2017. I'll also tell you that we did find out as we begun that imp process that we have about 187 roofs. So we need to begin to spread those out throughout our, throughout our system to make sure that some year I don't come up to the Commissioners and tell you I need to replace 140 roofs. So we need to begin to address those. I gave this to John Bell. He immediately went out for bid on this, and you have in front of you the low bids to repair the roofing at the Lingo Livery stable and also the Blacksmith Shop at Old Prairie Town. Be happy to answer any other questions, and if you have too complicated a question, that's why I have John Bell here.
Questions about the contract, Commissioner Cook?
Thank you, Commissioner Archer. Just our timeframe for looking at the repairs. I know that we have an event coming up that I'm sure John wants to remind people about.
Good morning, Commissioners. John Bell, Recreation Program, supervisor of Old Prairie Town. It will be after Apple Festival, which is September 30th and October 1st. This is the 38th Annual Apple Festival. Both days are 10 to 5. It is the biggest event that we have at Old Prairie Town. Really fun event. We've merged our Wheatstock Music Festival with Apple Festival, so now we have a wonderful two-day event. So lots, lots to see, do, and lots of food to eat, so.
Thanks. Good to know what's going to happen after the Apple Festival, on September 30th.
Yep, that's right. That's right. Absolutely, absolutely.
I'll move approval.
I'll second.
Motion made to approve the contract by Commissioner Cook, and that was seconded by Commissioner Buehler. All in favor say aye. Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Three to zero. Next item, please.
Item B two, Consider Recovery from the Professional Services Selection Committee to Contract with Professional Engineering Consultants and Architects for On-Call Architect and Engineering Services with Funding to be Identified in Future Project Budgets.
Commissioners, this was presented to the Professional Services Selection Committee, which is required by Shawnee County Parks and, or Shawnee County Resolution. You'll see the schedule, the detail we went into to select all of these. I won't go through all of that here this morning, but a pretty extensive search to go through all of that. What this person would be used for are many of those projects where we don't want to necessarily go up for the full RFP process. A recent one was, we just needed somebody to check our bridge specifications on a walking trail bridge for a Gage Park grant, something like that. Time-wise, it would have been much better just to be able to call these guys, and they could review the construction documents and sign off. Be happy to answer any other questions you may have.
Questions about the proposal?
I don't know. I'll move approval.
Second.
Motion made to approve by Commissioner Cook and seconded by Commissioner Buehler. All in favor say aye. Opposed, no. Motion carries. Three to zero. Thank you, John.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Next item, please.
Item C, Public Works Solid Waste. Item One, Consider Approval of Request to Waive Purchasing Resolution Requirements and Allow Negotiations to Sole Source Purchase with Clearspan Paper Structures International Inc. for a Fabric Trust Roofing System to be placed on the plant's salt storage shed at an estimated cost of $38,000.
Hi, Commissioners. Tom Block of Public Works and Solid Waste. This is a Public Works item. This is a follow-up to discussion, I believe, we had on Monday, or maybe it was last Thursday. But anyway, we are looking to build a new salt shed at our southeast district shop. The previous item was basically establishing the budget, and what we want to do, as I had mentioned last time, was we want to follow the same procedure that we had done for our other two salt sheds we put up, in which we work with Clearspan, and our crews will build the base and the foundation, and then Clearspan just comes in and puts the roofing system on. That has worked very well, and we've gotten some very good structures through this process. So that is what this request is, is to allow us to work with them again. We've got this process down with them, and it's our recommendation that we proceed the same way on this particular project. So if there's any questions, I'd be happy, happy to try to answer them.
Are there questions for Tom regarding this request?
I have no questions. I'll move to approve the request, waive the purchasing resolution, and allow for sole source purchase.
Second.
Motion made to approve by Commissioner Buehler, seconded by Commissioner Cook. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. Motion carries. Three to zero. Next item, please.
Item C two, Consider Approval of Change Order Number One, Final to Contract C-35-2017 with Betis Asphalt and Construction Inc., increasing the overall contract price by $14,721.29 for a total contract price of $1,627,184.18 for the Southwest Yurish Road, Southwest 17th Street to Southwest 21st Street project.
Hi, Commissioners. Tom Block again with Public Works and Solid Waste. This, too, is a Public Works item, and this is, as mentioned, is the completion, we're completing the south portion of our Yurish Road Improvement Project from 17th to 21st. This is a, basically doing final quantities, and, and just to let you know why we have an increase, most of our quantities are actually decreased. However, in our contracts, we have a clause which is called for an asphalt oil adjustment. And I don't, if you don't recall, or if I've never explained that to you what that is, or I'm going to remind you. Essentially what had happened, this is probably back in 2008 or 2009, when the economy really, really took a dive, and oil prices really shot up. We had some projects, the way it used to be done was, we would bid, we bid projects typically in December timeframe, and oil, there's a certain type of oil that's used for your mixture of asphalt. And, and when you, and that, that oil price fluctuates from month to month. And when typically, when you bid it in the winter, it's lower, and then by the time they actually place, the contractor places the asphalt and buys the oil at that time, it can, it can go up. And back in 2008 or 2009, it went up substantially. At that time, there was no, no ability for the contractor to recoup any of those fluctuations in price. So after that occurred, and this particular project, I mean, I believe our contractor lost, took a hit, I would say, several hundreds of thousands of dollars, just in the fluctuation in the oil price. So after that, it was, it was brought to our attention from several, from contractors in the area and said, you know what, we'd like to have some protection against that. Otherwise, it's just basically trying to gamble, and oftentimes it can be, they, they will be more conservative than they probably need to be when they actually put their bid in. So what we did was, when we, when we take bids now, we say the oil price is at such a level, say $350 per ton, and they, they give us their, their mixed design, so we can calculate how much oil would go into that project. Then, when they actually lay the asphalt, and we supply them with oil prices each month, when they actually lay the asphalt, we can calculate whether the price has gone up or gone down. And if it goes down, we, we benefit. If it goes up, we basically, it just protects them from, from wild fluctuations in, in price. So, on this particular project, the price of oil did go up throughout the project, but from the time it was bid to the time it was placed, and that alone was, I believe, like $28,000, just in the oil price alone. So that is why we have a $14,000. When you take all the other quantities and finalize what the final quantities were, plus the, the oil adjustment, the, the result was an increase of $14,000. So, that is the reason for the increase, but it's our recommendation, everything else, we believe is, is, works out, we're in agreement, and so it's our recommendation that this change order be approved, and for any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
First of all, thank you for the explanation. I think that was important for the public to note. We built in contingencies.
Yes.
When we do a major project like this, now still, I wanted to point out that we're still under budget for the project.
Yes, we are still.
Even with this adjustment that we had to make.
Correct. We are just about $53,000 under our project budget.
Right.
When it's all said and done.
Yeah, okay. I think that's important. Any other questions, Commissioner Cook?
Funding source.
On this one, this one, let's see here, I believe this one was combination, I think it was, was not sales tax, I know that, I think it was, it was federal exchange funds and in our local match, I believe.
Okay. I'll move approval.
Second.
Motion made to approve by Commissioner Buehler, seconded by Commissioner Cook. All in favor say aye. Opposed, no. Motion carries. Three to zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Tom, next item, please.
Item D, Health Department, Number One, Consider Approval to Fill One Purchasing Specialist Two Position at a Salary Including Benefits of $57,290.
Good morning, Commissioners. Linda Oaks from the Health Department. We are asking today to fill this position with the Health Department. This position has been vacant for a couple months. The person that was in the position resigned. This position is very important to our overall workings of the Health Department. This person does all the purchasing and ordering for all the departments, all the programs within the Health Department, and they also have to keep track of like which grants require a certain type of purchasing and tracking. They also, this person also helps create affidavits that we have to do for quarterly reports for all our grants. So it's a very busy position, and we would appreciate having it filled, and I'd be happy to answer any questions. And it is in our 2017 and 2018 budgets, too.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Motion made to approve by Commissioner Archer, seconded by Commissioner Buehler. All in favor say aye. Opposed, no. Motion carries. Three to zero. Next item, please.
Item D two, Consider Authorization and Execution of Contracts C-311-2017 with Kansas Children's Service League to Continue Offering an Intensive Home Visitation Program for At-Risk Families with Young Children or Those Families Who Are Expecting Children, Total Grant Funding in an Amount of $860,000 in Fiscal Year 2018, with $360,000 going to KCSL and $500,000 to the Health Department.
Good morning, Commissioners. Teresa Fisher with the Health Department. Today's request is to enter into a renewal contract with the Kansas Children's Service League for the Home Visitation Services. The Health Department uses these funds to provide our Nurse Family Partnership, and Kansas Children's Service League uses their funds to provide healthy families. Both of the programs are evidence-based. We use the Early Childhood Block Grant and also our Medicaid Match Funds to provide the total package for the grants. I would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions?
I'll move approval for the contract.
Second.
Motion made to approve by Commissioner Buehler, seconded by Commissioner Cook. All in favor say aye. Opposed, no. Motion carries. Three to zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
Item E, County Counselor, Number One, Consider Authorization and Execution of Contract C-312-2017 with the Communication Workers Union, CWA, Regarding Changes in the Memorandum of Understanding for Years 2016, 2017, and 2018, Revading to Job Classifications.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jim Crowell, Shawnee County Counselor. I think this is an example of teamwork in action in Shawnee County. This is actually a Sheriff's Office item for the Shawnee County Emergency Communications Center. You'll remember on Monday, you authorized the creation of this position. This contract was negotiated last spring with Human Resources, County Counselor's Office, and CWA with, with Sheriff's Office Personnel to figure out the rules for integrating that new position within the existing CWA, or Communication Workers of America bargaining unit, and that's what this amendment does. It amends the current contract to allow for that position that was created on Monday. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions for the County Council?
I'll move approval.
Second.
Motion made to approve the contract by Commissioner Cook, seconded by Commissioner Buehler. All in favor say aye. Opposed, no. Motion carries. Three to zero. Next item.
Thank you.
Item E two, Consider Home Rule Resolution HR-2017-3, Adopting the Shawnee County Title VI Plan to Ensure Compliance with Federal Laws for Preventing Unlawful Discrimination. First reading.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jonathan Brison, Assistant County Counselor. As the Clerk stated, this is a first reading of a home rule resolution that would adopt a Title VI Plan for Shawnee County. As you know, we receive federal funding, and therefore we're required to comply with Title VI to ensure that we do not have any unlawful discrimination in our programs or activities. This plan has a lot of provisions. A few of the major ones are, it sets forth a procedure for persons to file complaints with the county about Title VI, and explains how we're going to investigate those. It explains how we're going to continue to engage and involve the public in county decision-making, and it also has provisions for ensuring effective communication with persons that don't speak English. Be happy to answer any questions.
Questions regarding this first reading? Commissioner Cook?
This resolution did not arise as a result of a complaint or any sort of legal action.
No.
Or consent order. This is not something that's being forced upon the county as a result of any sort of discriminatory action?
No, not at all.
Okay. And Shawnee County has had a, a policy of not discriminating for a very, very long period of time.
Right. This just makes that better and more organized.
Okay. Just to make sure that's clear, that this is not as part of having done something wrong.
Good point. So this is being proactive instead of reactive.
Right.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Cook. Commissioner Buehler?
I have my question.
Okay. Okay, we will put the resolution on for Monday's agenda, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
Item F, Administrative Services, Number One, Update on Revenues and Expenditures.
Okay, if I can find the mouse. There we go. Good morning. Betty Greiner, Director of Administrative Services. I'm here this morning with our financial overview as of August 31st of this year. I will start with the revenue side. Our year-to-date revenue as of August 31st totaled $91,529,965. That is $138,835 under budget, which is 0.13%. So, I would say we can say we are right on budget for our total revenue. This chart just shows the total and the breakdown between the different categories that I'll go into. The first category is property tax revenue. We've received $77,826,24. That is the same as last month, as we did not receive a tax distribution in the month of August. Next category is other tax revenue. We have received $5,550,558. That is $111,000 under what I had estimated, and most of that is attributable to the highway tax that we received from the state, and we have actually received $233,000 under what the state had estimated. The next category is property-related fees. We've received $1,331,267. That is $294,000 over what we had estimated, but the month of August was pretty much right on budget. It was $26,000 over what we had estimated. So there again, as we've talked before, just had more mortgage filings this year, or either more filings or larger filings, it's, you know, can be a combination of both. Next category is charges for services. We've received $3,422,216. That is $557,000 under budget through August, and that is primarily two different departments. Parks and Recreation is $333,000 under what was estimated, and Department of Corrections is $175 under what we had estimated. And as we've talked throughout this year, one of the things in talking with Parks and Rec is the, the revenue from the Aquatic Center was down a little bit from what they expected. The North, Shawnee North, and then also Blaisdale were, the attendance and the revenue from those two were down this year. Then on the Department of Corrections, we've talked about how their inmate counts are down, and that includes the inmates from other jurisdictions that pay us to keep, you know, inmates for them. The next category is other revenue. We've received $3,405,301. That is $689,000 over budget, primarily two main areas. We've received some defecence revenue this year, and then also our investment revenue, our investment income is up because of interest rates. This is just the chart that shows the breakdown of that. 85% of our revenue that we've received is from property taxes. Other taxes is 6%. Property-related fees are 1%. Charges for services are 4%, and then miscellaneous revenue is 4%. Just one other item, we have received through the end of August, 88% of our expected revenue for the year. Now, on to the expenditure side. We have paid expenditures of $69,872,000, I'm sorry, let me start over, $69,872,104. That is $1,441,792 under budget. So we would consider that a positive variance because we have spent less than was budgeted by 1.39%. So even though that $1 million sounds like a lot, that's 1.39% of what we expect to pay this year. This chart shows the different categories that I'll go through and the makeup of those, and then it also shows last year's there also. The first category is public safety. We have spent through the end of August, $28,357,460. This category is $723,000 under budget, so this is our largest category of the positive variance, and that is mostly all attributable to the Sheriff's Department. The Sheriff's Department is $693,000 under budget. In talking with them, again, it's a payroll issue that they have not been able to fill all the positions that they have vacant and had hoped to. The next category is public health. We've spent $6,656,881, and that is right on budget. The next is administrative services. We've spent $8,383,801. That is $362,000 under budget. This department, this category has 10 departments within it, so this is a, the sum of all of those departments, and the main, the main area where we are under budget is in the general expenses in the contingency, which we've, we've not had to spend all that has been budgeted. Next category is public works. We've spent $5,675,331. That is $109,000 under budget, and a lot of that is just timing issues for public works issues, although the planning department is $75,000 under budget for this, through August. Next category is Parks, Recreation, and Expo Center. We've spent $10,938,39. That is $178,000 under budget, and most all of that is in Parks and Rec. And the last category is debt service. We have spent $9,860,592, and that, this shows the total of our expenses for the year for our debt service, interest, and principal. In August, we paid our, all of our principal for the year and the second half of the interest. So, that is why that number jumped up so much this month. This category, this chart just shows the different categories and the expenses related to that. It really, I think this chart really shows how public safety is the category we spend the most money on by far. And this is the pie chart that shows, breaks down those categories. 41% has been spent on public safety. Public health is 9%. Admin services is 12%. Public works is 8%. Parks, Rec, Parks, Rec, and Expo is 16%, and debt service is 14%. Couple items I would mention on the public works, as I usually mention, this does not include the money that we, that we get from the sales tax that we spend on that. It also wouldn't include those federal exchange dollars that we use. Debt service, this will be the highest percentage we will see on that because the other expenses, we will continue to have expenses throughout the year. The debt service amount will stay the same, so that percentage will be going down through the rest of the year. So if we look at our total expenditures, we have spent 67% of what we expect to spend for the year. So, and I, you know, remind you that I said we had received 88% of our revenue. So, we've received the majority of our revenue, but we will still continue to have, you know, expenses throughout the rest of the year. So that's why the revenue and the expenditures do not zero out or come to a closer number, so. And I'll ask, answer any questions you may have.
Let me apologize for my phone being on. The good news is, it wasn't Tyson Foods calling. Questions for Betty on the report?
I have none.
Okay. Thank you, Betty. Next item, please.
Item five, Communications.
This is your opportunity to communicate with the public.
Commissioner Tom Block, again, Public Works, Solid Waste. Just want to let you know that the Mill and Overlay project that we've been doing on Southwest Auburn Road from 45th to 61st, all the asphalt has been placed, and our crews are now doing the striping today, so that project should be done today. So just want to let you know.
Very good. Thank you, Tom.
Good morning, Commissioners. Kellen Sights, Kansas Expo Center. Just want to remind everyone, tonight is the final third Thursday of our season. It starts at 5:00, so make sure you come on out for that for a free fun event. Saturdays kicks off this weekend, Saturday and Sunday. Thousands of people at the Expo Center enjoying arts and crafts festivals and fresh pressed cider. The National Barrel Horse Association has a state event for Saturday and Sunday at Doma Arena. And then next week, the Big Church Night Out featuring Newsboys is Thursday, the 28th. And then just wanted to remind everybody again that the public on sale for Cirque du Sole start tomorrow morning at 10:00 a.m. Sales for that are doing very well at the moment, so.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kellen.
Carol Marple, Shawnee County. Auburn Road is great, just awesome. I just wanted to throw that out. I just have a curiosity question, and it's not directed to Public Works, it's just an overall question, that if you bid something and the commodity that's used in the bidding is that volatile, shouldn't vendor be locking in the price of whatever it is? That's my question.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Bill Crowell, Facilities Maintenance Director. Update on our parking lot projects. The, excuse me, the northeast parking lot, we have scheduled right now for the work to resume on that area, starting next Monday, weather permitting, of course. The excavation area that we have to do is around the current island, and there will be six parking stalls, I believe is what we determined this morning, finally, that will be out of service during this week to 10-day period of construction in there. The lot itself will remain open during that time, and we should have full traffic through it except for those six spots. I did communicate with Court Administration on that, so they're aware of it. And it'd be one county employee that I haven't told yet, but I'll let him know when I see him. And I have Steve Mohan, our contractor, on that, and Greg Sims, if you have any questions regarding those.
Questions for Bill or Mr. Mohan on the parking lot? Commissioner Cook?
I know that, you know, we were doing some excavating to fill in the void. Are we certain that this is going to satisfy a long-range, make sure that we're not going to have this problem come back in a, you know...
We're pretty sure. I mean, you still have the, we did do some core samples, but we, you know, until you actually open up underneath and really see, the core samples did indicate we should be able to backfill with some flammable fill. There'll be a change order on that to give us some extra strength. But at this point, until we actually open it up, we won't know for certain. But it will also, once we do open it up, give us a really good picture of what we've got in that lot for future and life expectancy of it as well, so. Because we'll see the concrete and how it's cured up over the last 60 years and everything else, so.
And as you always don't know what you don't know until you get in there.
Right.
Are we building contingency plans as to transport of inmates? If there's something that comes up, building up other contingency plans if that parking lot becomes unable to do?
No, we haven't done that yet, because we absolutely do not anticipate that happening for the transport of prisoners around the Sallyport. The primary area of the construction will be on the north end of that lot. So, and we will be able to keep a path going all the way around so they can get in and out.
Okay. Just making sure that we've built all the plans into place, because that is a pretty key core function of the warehouse.
Yeah, and Steve and Greg are both well aware of that, and we had a meeting this morning, even watched one of the corrections people come in with their van and how they got around. The demo of it will be the most nasty part, and that will begin Monday, again, weather permitting. Fast Track, I think he said, he should be done with everything he's got to do in two days. There will be a period where a dump truck has to get in there to get some of the stuff out, but we should be able to keep it open without any problem at all. And then the concrete guys follow in right behind it, and then the electrician to get the pole light up, and about week to 10 days, and it should be, we can say goodbye to these guys.
Let's hope for good weather and no surprises.
That's what we're hoping for. Any questions you might have, I'll be more than happy to answer them.
Okay.
Very good.
Thanks.
Okay. Thanks, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Mohan. Anyone else for administrative communications this morning? Commissioner Cook?
I know that I can say I was personally glad to see that it didn't ring a "Let It Go" on your ringtone, so. But today, at 6:30, at the Central Park Community Center, there is a City of Topeka pedestrian plan that is being announced and discussed. And the pedestrian plan is something that is, does touch on the Shawnee County with our parks and our trails, and so I look forward to hearing what they have to say on the pedestrian plan as it's implemented in the Central Park neighborhood.
Very good. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Bueller?
I don't have anything.
Okay. I don't have anything else either. Next item, please.
Item six, Executive Session.
There's not a need for an executive session, but I will say that the Board of Health Meeting will be next item, and we're going to take a five-minute break. There's some technical things that we need to change over, so let's take five minutes, and then we'll get busy with the Health Department.